Okay, good evening. This is the July 1st, 2025 annual organization meeting of the Board of Education on Mount Holy Land's Order. It's 7:04 PM. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I get a motion for adjournment to executive session, please?
I move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations in employment history, particular persons, personnel matters, and/or employee records, and that is deemed confidential by state or federal law, including seeking advice from counsel.
Second. It's been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Without executive session, we're due back as usual. Where is the things to where is the things to sign?
Yeah, so if somebody needs to check the side.
Okay, is everybody ready to begin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker, let me know when the market is on. Great, it's currently 8:00 PM. It's currently 8:09 PM, and we're going to start the annual organization meeting of the Board of Education. First, we're going to start with our oath of office. I'll turn the meeting over to our district clerk, Patricia Pineda.
Trustee Warner, please stand. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of trustees for the Greenberg Central School District?
I do.
Trustee Alom, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee for the Greenberg Central School District?
I do.
Yes, you're on your charge, Patricia.
Before I take nominations for the office of president, I would just ask that you raise your hand so that I can call upon you, since I am also taking minutes for this meeting. In the event that a candidate is unopposed, Roberts rules of order states that election is not required. The floor is now open for nominations. Trustee Warner?
I nominate Tracy Mears.
Does anyone second the nomination?
Second.
Okay, any further nominations? There being no further nominations, nominations for the office of fore president are now closed. President Mears?
Yes, so for the election, thank you. A vice president of the office?
I have the oath of office.
Sorry, I'm going too fast, yes.
All right, do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of fore president for the Greenberg Central School District?
Yes.
I now turn the meeting over to the newly elected president.
Thank you. For the election of vice president, the floor is now open for nominations. Trustee Warner?
I nominate Chris Valen.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's properly moved in second. Does anyone else have any further nominations? Hearing them, there's only one candidate for the office of vice president. Christine Valen is declared vice president for the 2526 school year. Please stand for your oath of office.
Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of fore vice president for the Greenberg Central School District?
Yes, I do.
And we have a Board of Education code of ethics. We also have a statement by one of our board members that wants to give a statement. Do we want to do it before or after the code of ethics?
You can do that.
After, okay. So we, every year, we affirm our code of ethics policy. It's policy number one, excuse me, 1110-dash-E. Every board member should have a copy, and we're going to read line by line. We'll go around, and then we ask to sign and date it. Trustee Alom, can you start with number one, please?
Do you want me to read the first paragraph?
Oh, sure, thank you.
As a member of my Board of Education, I will strive to improve public education, and to that end, I will remember always that my first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of all students at the school district.
Observe the regulations and policies of the school system and the laws, rules, and regulations governing education in New York State.
Number three, attend regularly scheduled board meetings and study the issues to be considered at those meetings, and attend additional meetings as necessary. The regularly scheduled meetings of the GCSE Board are generally held on the first and third Tuesdays of each month, but the actual schedule will be delivered to all board members in advance and will be posted on the GCSE website.
Number four, focus board action on policymaking, planning, and evaluation, and on ensuring the prudence, excuse me, and ethics of the district's operation, and recognize that the superintendent, not the board, is responsible for the day-to-day administration of the district.
Recognize that the board functions only as a board through duly adopted policies and actions approved at public sessions, that individual board members have no authority to act on behalf of the district or the board.
Number six, render all decisions based on the available facts and independent judgment, and refuse to surrender that judgment to individuals or special interest groups.
Encourage the free expression of opinion by all board members, and seek systematic communications between the board of students, staff, and all elements of the community.
Number eight, become informed about current educational issues by individual study and through participation in programs providing needed information, such as those sponsored by state and national school board associations.
Number nine, support the employment of those persons best qualified to serve as school staff, and insist on regular and impartial evaluation of all staff.
And number 10, communicate to other board members and the superintendent expressions of public reaction to board policies and school programs.
Thank you, everyone. So at the bottom, he asks for your signature, and the date is July 1st, 2025. So please sign, and then we'll provide our copy to our district clerk. Next item up on our agenda is introduction of our ex officio student members, but we do have a board member that wants to make a statement.
Uh, single name?
So we're going to turn the meeting over to trustee Mears. Your statement.
Always to mention so. Yesterday marked the completion of my first year as a trustee on the Board of Education, and I have to admit that it has been quite the experience. Many times, I ask myself, self, what did you get yourself into, but then I always remember the why of why I joined the board. One of those whys was to serve as a voice for the community and families. I've listened to concerns, and I've advocated on many issues revolving around equity and access. I've met a plethora of stakeholders made up of a plethora of different personalities, and despite the content of our conversations, we always have one thing in common, the betterment of our district and the betterment of education for our students. So this upcoming school year is going to be exciting because we're entering into a new chapter for our district. Being a proud alum of the district with three children in our schools, I'm truly looking forward to what's next to come. Under new leadership, our district will have an opportunity to continue building on our strengths and to drive continued progress for every student, every staff member, and every family that we serve. There will be peaks and valleys, highs and lows, as we write this new chapter, but it will be essential that we come together with mutual respect and are committed to work as a team for the good of our schools and our community. When we agree to disagree, we must remember to be kind to one another, because respect and compassion are the foundation of true collaboration. No matter which side of the district that you may represent, please don't forget, we're all in this together. So with that, I welcome everyone to our new school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have an introduction of our ex officio student members. This year, we have two student members. Our student members are seniors who have applied for the position, and tonight, we have them both here. The first I have is Eli Cinco, so you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, guys, I'm Eli Cinco. I'm a senior. Um, I don't know what to say.
That's wonderful. I'm going to hear it for you as the year goes on. And next, we have Ms. Vanessa Franklin.
Good morning, my name is Vanessa Franklin. I've been a part of this district since I was born, so I just want to add a key word.
Wonderful. Okay, well, thank you so much for spending your time to join at the Board of Education. Do you guys have any questions or anything you want to say about your class this year? Last year, the district? You've been here since pre-K, I guess. When did you come to the district?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten. I gotta say, we always have our students who are here a long time. Can you tell us anything about your class or anything you want to share today?
Any activities that you do that you enjoy, or should you have about activities that I do? Anything that you need to share?
Tell us something about research.
I am a, I'm the captain of the afternoon team and the founder of the fountain rats about the community. I enjoy being here, I've been here for so long. Everybody's welcoming. I enjoy the celebrations we have and the, what's it, not parties, but when we gather together, when we gather together, it's always nice.
Okay. I'm the founder of the Finance and Business Club, and I'm the community service coordinator and digital communications manager for National Honor Society, and I've been in the drama club for, since fourth grade, but for this year, for this high school, I've been a part of the drama club for seventh grade. I'm a part of the tennis team, the swimming team. I'm very involved with this, with this.
Wonderful. Last thing about woodlands.
Friends.
Friends, good. Best thing about woodlands.
I like the teachers.
Teachers, okay, wonderful. So thank you guys very much. Any questions or anything? No? Welcome. Okay, now we have our introduction of our new superintendent, Dr. Loretta Chisholm.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm excited to be here, my first day, and it happens to be boarding day. So as I officially begin my role as superintendent of schools, I really just wanted to take a moment to personally, you know, I've met many of you, I'm meeting now our students, board members, but to community, I'd introduce myself officially, and express really how truly honored I am to join the Greenberg Central School District family. In the weeks and months ahead, I'll be spending time with students, families, faculty, staff, and community partners to listen, learn, and better understand the heartbeat of Greenberg Central. And so with that, your insights and your experiences will really guide that path forward. And so I've already had some informal meetings with faculty and staff, as well as members of the community already, and I want to thank everyone for such a performance in the district. So again, thank you, and I stand ready to serve.
Wonderful, thank you. So next on our agenda, we have the annual organization meeting approvals, our appointment items. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the appointment items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second, it's improperly moved in second. Is there any discussion? There was a question raised about the fact that there's no hearing officer names there. Do we want to talk about that at all? Anyone?
Was there a reason there's no names listed?
Yeah.
Are you referencing the special education?
It's item C number.
Right, so the New York State Education Department has a rotating, has a list, and when, when you appoint a hearing officer, you go to the New York State Education Department that maintains the list, and they give you the next person on their list. So the school district no longer maintains its own list, it's part of a much bigger list.
So then, why does the, I mean, to that point, the resolution states the Board of Education shall appoint incompetent partial hearing officers using the district-specific list as maintained by NICED system. That covers all of that, even though it's called a district-specific?
Because the New York State Education Department maintains the list, and they know who you have had in the past, and so you don't repeat the same person. They go to your next person on your list.
So it's still district-specific, even though it's maintained by that?
All right, thank you. Okay, so it's properly moved in second, and discussion has been had. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, yes?
Not on, not on this, I'm not.
On a different item?
Yeah.
Under appointment?
Under appointment, section one. The internal auditor has TVZ, so I guess we don't have an internal auditor just yet, but when we get one, we'll be to the resolution.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, that's.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second, and discussion had. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next is our authorization items. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the authorization items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second, it's been properly moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Can I get a motion for designation items?
I move that we approve the designation items presented for the, to the board for approval this evening.
Second, it's improperly moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, um, there was a question on the designation items regarding the facility, um, the facility fitness center, and whether or not it was open in the summer, and the answer was yes, that it's open from Monday through Friday, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM.
It's a determination item, so I don't want to change that.
Excuse me, determination items. So I will wait. I'm sorry. Is there any discussion about designations? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Can I get a determination items motion?
I move that we approve the determination items presented to the board for approval this evening.
It's been properly moved in second, any discussion? The Woodlands middle. It's open from 3:00 to 7:00, Monday through Friday, in the summer. Any other questions, concerns?
Do we need to change the word, or did we change the?
We did, they changed it. Any other questions, comments? Can any community member attend the fitness center? Probably just to show what their idea or something, that they live here? And sign it. Wonderful, thank you. Did you guys have any question?
I'm surprised.
Sometimes we are too, it's totally fine. Okay, so it's been properly moved in second, and some discussion has been had. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now we're going to open our regular meeting. I should let the public know that we will have a second executive session just because we have additional issues we need to address. But the first item on our regular meeting is the introduction of new hires. Ms. Pineda, do we have any new hires here today?
Yes, Bridget Calvey.
Wonderful, Ms. Calvey. Calvey? Oh, okay. Okay, maybe.
Margaret Dossi.
Ms. Dossi, please, hi. Please stand up so that people can see you on the camera.
Here?
Yes.
Here's fine.
Come to us, yeah. Let us know who you are, what you are doing here for the district, and please tell us something about yourself.
Sure, well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the invitation. My name is Margaret Dossi. I am a special education teacher. I had worked as an educator for over 20 years in different capacities. I've been a museum educator, a teacher's aide, a teacher assistant, a preschool teacher, but I'm super duper excited that this is going to be my second year as a special education teacher for the Greenberg Central School District. I was actually hired here last summer to be in the ECP for the ESY program.
Okay.
And I totally fell in love with the district, I fell in love with the kids, I fell in love with the teachers, and actually, I was very excited. One of these special ed teachers there used to teach my own son when he was little, so it's a little full circle moment, but I'm super excited. I'm teaching here this summer, and I heard that there was a position available for September, and I just ran right over it then.
And you got it!
Yeah, so I'm super duper duper excited to be here. Thank you, awesome.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, it's welcome.
And then we have, I see Dr. Faruki here. Did I pronounce your name right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Please come and introduce yourself, we know you.
So, good evening, my name is Dr. Faruki, and I'm the new director of Global Learning and Academic Excellence, and I've had amazing two, three days here working to transition with Catherine, and was able to meet some of the team, and today was my first day that I got my foot in the door, but I'm very excited for a productive summer, and looking forward to be part of such a great team, and working alongside all of you. And I just want to thank you for that opportunity again, and to join us in the new district.
Wonderful, thank you. And so next on our agenda is board president's report, so I'm going to be very brief, as usual, I am. I'm very happy that we started the new school year. We have Dr. Chisholm here, who comes with a breadth of experience in school districts, and comes from public education family, which is amazing, and I look forward to working with the same board. This is the first time the board has not changed in five years, I believe, with at least one new board member, so that is awesome. It might didn't be longer than five years, my memory may be failing me. I'm looking forward to the work we're going to do this summer. We have several retreats lined up that we're going to be meeting, working with our new administration, working on roles, working on looking at our strategic planning, and updating our board goals this year as well as the district goals for moving forward. We put out a survey. We asked all parents to fill out a survey. At any given time, we have somewhere between 1,600 and 1,700 families in the district, and we have 400 and, who's going to give me the number? 400-plus surveys returned, which was excellent. That is an excellent return rate on our surveys, especially because everyone doesn't listen to phone blasts all the time. We did get that data, we are sharing it with our administration, we are going to really be looking at the data and the replies that we got in our planning for moving forward and for setting our goals. You know, we, thank you, we are, most of the board are parents here, but we have our own experiences, and we really wanted to hear from parents what their experiences were in the school district. So there was a total of 427 completed surveys, 392 in English and 35 surveys in Spanish, so I believe that's, if the, if the number is correct, with the total district between 1,600 and 1,700, that's about 25% of the district's students, so it's one in every four students, hopefully, we heard from their parent, which is amazing, and the responses were kind of consistently about 25% from ECP all the way up through Woodlands Middle High School. All right, so we definitely, again, are going to go through that data. We had a list of several parents who volunteered as well to be part of any focus group. I want to be clear, there's not a set focus group right now, but those are names that will be shared with Dr. Chisholm and shared with the principals in case you wanted to do any sort of focus group. Those parents have volunteered themselves. Okay, any questions, comments, anyone want to share any feedback they got about the survey? No?
I just have a question. Is this going to be something you do annually, is these surveys for our parents to select?
Well, it was just an idea this year. I think if the superintendent would like to move forward with that type of thing, that's fine. The board can definitely, if we think that was good engagement, if we get great feedback moving forward, we can definitely try to put something out as well going forward. I think it was a great way to get some feedback from parents. The parents I spoke to said that they liked sharing their feedback and giving information. That's what I was saying, I don't know if you guys heard different things, but people seem to like to share their experience that, this year. How is it for my report? I'm going to move on to committee selection and reports. So our board has an awful lot of committees. That is the way in which we do our business, and we look at a lot of the things that are happening in the district. So our current committees, I don't have, so I have just a printout of the first page. No, I have, thank you. I don't have, do we have a printout, Patricia, of the other page? No?
Of the, yeah, yes, everyone has, yes.
Okay.
Not of the, not of where we selected.
Okay, no worries, I have it here. Okay, so one of the things trustees, we're going to look at is what committees we want to be on this year. I see several of you on the document. The other thing we need to look at is whether or not we're going to keep the same committees or not. We can dismantle the committee, we can merge the committees, which we have done before, we can break up committees if we want to work on one particular specific thing or another. So the first item is the community engagement committee. We only have two trustees that have volunteered for that committee this year. What's your pleasure with that committee? Yes?
Do you propose to combine it and do community engagement and community? La la la, why can't I speak? Community engagement and communications again? And then there would be three.
So there are two, there are different people who want to, yes, so there are different people who want to be on different committees. There's only one trustee, what does this mean, MB?
Maybe.
Maybe. I didn't know! So, so, yes, there would be three, there would be three trustees interested in the work to be joined again. Community engagement and communication. It is not a required committee, so other districts don't necessarily have community engagement or communications. What are your pleasure? And I'm bringing it up because as the year goes on, we get extremely busy.
I would defer to the people who, yes. Can I just say what the communications committee would do?
Good question. No, it's a great question.
Does anybody know?
So in the past, so it's had different roles in the past. So this year, it was combined with the CEC community engagement. I'm not sure, I wasn't on that committee. I don't know how much communications was done. I personally am a fan of separating committees so that the actual work can get done. You guys know that, because usually when it's combined, there is like one of the topics that gets less attention, right? So communications would work along, Dr. Chisholm, superintendent, is the liaison for CEC and for communications, and so it would work on communications, give feedback if, you know, people aren't getting communicated too well, give feedback on the newsletter, give feedback on the website, because that committee also handles that. So I don't know how much, I know you were the chair of CEC last year, but...
I know that if you go back in time enough years, you will come upon a time when the communications person that you hire would sit in on the CEC meetings and, you know, listen to what was going on, what kind of feedback we got. But at this time, a lot of the other committees were less active, so we had kind of a one-stop shopping thing where we would invite people in and do things that you would find in an education committee one year, and you would find, in a safety committee, another, another point in time, and we'd do a meeting on each topic, okay? And then people would come and meet in person, and this was before COVID and before we got used to Zoom meetings. And so the committee that does communication largely, I think, started meeting with the, with the superintendent, and the PTA would kind of, would kind of meet with them, and that, that kind of went off and was its own thing, but it seemed to be running like cops, we didn't, we didn't want to touch it. And then, and then we continued to have the, the meetings, but we had them over Zoom, so very few people would tend to show up, and we started to move ourselves where we would be part of an event. So if the basketball team went to the town, and, you know, they came and set them in the stage, and we were about to share, we'd invite people, and then it comes to the event, and then you have this meeting of, of, you know, five or six people afterwards that wanted to stay and, you know, plan the next, the next set of events. So that's kind of how it's been running lately. I don't know if you want to be too quick with this mantle, it's something that's been working at least with the administration from a Communications perspective. I will deviate from the Communications meeting. What do you think, Dr. Chisholm? Do you know yet?
I would, I would be inclined to say, let's kind of set it up with those people that serve on the committee to see how they might want to, if they want to crunch it or kind of keep it on, because it's just me right now, like, the rest of the committee is not here. Who else?
So I volunteered this year for Communications, not for Community Engagement. Trustee Valen.
I just want to point out that I, we do have, hopefully, I'm just looking at CEC right now. There were charges approved from last year for the committee at the November fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting. I am looking at those charges and that's what they were charged to do last year. Part of those charges, even though the name of the committee reverted to Community Engagement Committee, the first item in the list of charges is make recommendations for district-wide communications policy with procedures. Just throwing that in there.
So that's, that's a little more, you can do.
So in case you wanted to write it down, if anyone else wanted to.
I'm very inclined to adjourn now, based on some of the things that just you said came under charge.
Okay, so we'll leave it. So if, if it were to say combined, there are three trustees not interested in serving. So I'll keep going. Next is the Facilities Committee. We have three trustees interested in that as well. That is a mandatory required committee. That's trustee James.
Would it be helpful to decide first whether we're combining or not combining, just so we know who's doing what?
Uh, I feel like we try that.
Personally, I feel like the ones that we separated last year should not be recombined.
Like Facilities and Finance?
Yes, or like Safety and Tech, Educational Wellness, like those all used to be merged and I feel like there's too much that happened to each of those meetings to, to your earlier point, like something always gets left off. So I was operating on this list based on how it was last year. It is something that it would continue that way just because each of these committees did a lot of work. So I just, as we're picking who's doing what, we would have too many people in some cases if we merged.
That's what I'm talking about. So, so Facilities is not merged with Finance, that was a big discussion last year, I think, or the year before, last year. We have left that separate. Facilities is required, Finance is not. Right, so we have to have a Facilities Committee. It looks like there's three people interested, so we're going to continue to move forward with that. Next, we have the Finance Committee, there's four people interested in that. So, let's look at this. Do we want to have a Finance Committee? Every district does not have a Finance Committee. No one's saying anything, but four people are interested, yes.
So, the idea was that we would, we would find things to improve the, our ability to look at our finances and we would also handle the budget cycle, right? Those are the two main things that the Finance Committee did last year. If you're not going to mind it with somebody, somebody else, then certainly we need to do at least, we need to at least land the budget cycle. If you think everything is perfect in Finance land, which...
I'm just going to clarify, other districts let the Assistant Superintendent of Business handle the budget cycle. And present to the board. So I'm saying that, listen, I've been on the Finance Committee, I'm not pointing any fingers, I'm saying that as a fact that some districts don't have a Finance Committee. So how they check in with the Finance, they get a report from the Assistant Superintendent of Business, they submit half the questions, and they move on. Do we want to keep our Finance Committee? We have four people who volunteered to be on that committee. So, yes, trustee Valen.
Oh, I'm not going to give you the direct yes or no that you want, but I'm going to say at a minimum, I think we should put some dates on the district calendar for budget season, for public meetings, so people can sign to ask questions about the budget in addition to our board meetings. And I don't know whether that's a discussion in leadership or what, but I'm just going to throw it out there. I'm also going to say that I would like to tentatively keep the committee, but that conversation can continue to evolve as we fill the positions.
Okay, trustee Lance.
Has it been advantageous having this committee versus other districts? Have we looked at that?
I have not. I don't know, you know, but I just want to be clear, like when we, and trustee Valen can attest to, when we go to other events, like districts do not have the same committees. Committees mean meetings, right? So, all of us have run for the board and it was two meetings a month. There's multiple committees, right? We have some weeks that we're out every single night. Not complaining about the level of commitment, my concern is not to burn anyone out. And also, to address the fact that we have an awful lot of committees in our district, maybe it works for us, we believe it, I don't know, but I didn't want to not ignore it.
I would say as a member of the Finance Committee this last year, I found it very beneficial to be allowed us to get deep dives and better explanations and various things that never were, I'm not a sort of myself, in professional jack outing, but I thought would have more to comment than I did so much. I don't know how to remove myself from that.
Alrighty. And we will keep going. Next, we have the Education Committee, also not a required committee. This year, Education Committee is very structured, under the leadership of Vice President Valen, with specific topics that were given out and discussed early in the year and handed out. No guarantee that it's happening that way this year. It has not run like that in the past. What say you with Education Committee? We have one, two, three, four trustees interested in serving on that committee. Same discussion, guys, so, share your thoughts.
I think keep it. I think it's valuable, especially for the community, who does come out, sometimes it's not as many as we could hope, but I think that information is valuable.
All right, yes.
I'll say there was, I haven't had the post-meeting, meeting with our liaison, but I think the initial thought process is to do more of the topics that the parents were interested in, in parent university, and to refocus the Education Committee more on the policy side and some of the back, some of the more board-related things, which may lead to the committee meeting less frequently, but that's a conversation that hasn't fully happened yet because things are busy. Just throwing that out there as far as expectations, not that I would be the chair, just putting it out there.
That's what you have to say. We're in the business of education and I think anytime you can provide more information and more transparency, the better. And I didn't look at all of the survey responses and the open-ended questions, but I think there's a lot of meat there that can be used both for parent universities and for broader policy discussions that I think would warrant another helpful committee.
Okay. Anyone else? So the point is now, Education Committee has four trustees wanting to serve, so do we make that a committee of the board?
Yes, committee of the whole.
Committee of the whole, yeah. So what that means for the public is the committee of the whole, it means it gets noticed as a, as a special meeting, as a board meeting, and we, anyone can come, any of the seven board members really can, can show up. And the issue will, the discussion will be around education, but it's a, it's a board meeting every time, okay? Just for, right, it's a committee of the board, let's spell that right. Next, we have Wellness. Just want to point out that no one's okay with eliminating committees yet. So a lot of committees. Next, we have Wellness, which is a required committee. Yes, trustee Valen?
Four times per year is the minimum that it must meet.
The minimum that it must meet is four times a year. We do have two trustees interested in serving on the committee. Is there a third? These meetings are usually daytime meetings, it doesn't have to be. No? Okay, anyone, oh, we can't eliminate it, it's required. Next, we have the DEI Committee. We have one, two, one trustee interested in serving on that committee. Is that a committee we need? Yes?
I guess before, my impression was that it wasn't a board committee, that it was a district committee, as opposed to a board committee. So, is it really up for us to say whether it's a committee?
Whether or not we want to serve on the committee, like if there's, there's up to three board members that can serve on the committee, whether or not Dr. Chisholm wants to have a DEI committee with or without board members is up to Dr. Chisholm. But do, we have one trustee willing to serve.
I think it's very valuable.
Okay. Did you want to say something?
No.
No, okay. Next, we have Governance and Policy Committee. I, I requested we separate that, but Governance and Policy Committee has four people interested in serving. Is that a committee that we still want to keep? Not required, either of them?
We like being hidden.
Apparently, but we also don't like being booked every night. We get exhausted. We make decisions when we're exhausted, it's not good. Trustee Valen?
So I'll just say, we, we, I believe the committee started before I got on the board because you guys were creating the Board Handbook, which is a very valuable document, I think, for all of us when we joined the board.
Yes.
It's accessible to the public, if anyone's curious. It's about how we operate. And then that morphed into, you know, us discussing, once I got on the board, us discussing the effectiveness of our meetings and because of COVID, there was a huge backlog of policies. So it was more a way to structure how we worked through the policy backlog and how we set the priorities and getting them down. Unfortunately, we're not at the place where we can just roll into what policies we get each month we do. I'd like one more year to try to finish working through the backlog.
So you want to leave it merged?
I, I would also argue that a lot of the governance stuff can be done in leadership. So...
However, however, there was a push by NISBA several years ago to always have a Governance Committee, to always look at your board functioning. We have a evaluation tool we use at the end of every meeting. We rate ourselves with a board evaluation at the end of every year. So Governance is supposed to be important. Do we need to have Governance? Do we want to drop it?
I would say the only thing of Governance that really hasn't been looked at again lately is our board norms.
Do we want to drop it? Yes?
If they want to be right with the charges for the policy, make sure we integrate and hold ourselves accountable to touching on the governance that's a more substantial element.
I'll share, I had an issue because we didn't do as much Governance as I would have liked to do, but you're right, it can be done in leadership. What I like about the Governance, part of the Governance Committee is that usually the president is on the committee and the superintendent is the liaison, but it gives other board members not in leadership a chance to discuss Governance. Next issue we're going to have is that we have four people interested in Governance and Policy. So, does anyone want to come off? No? It would be a position that I have to choose.
You want to get rid of it.
I know.
Well, I would get rid of, I would separate the committee that way. The four people interested, are you interested in one over the other?
President Mayor, we have Governance, it's something that sounds like you don't have to meet every month. Maybe every other, right? Or it would definitely be ad hoc, whereas Policy, that would be a monthly meeting.
It does not have to be a monthly meeting. So Policy in the past has had no committee, has been a committee of the board, has come up in a, like a board meeting where we discuss the policy when needed, but as trustee Valen explained, we have a whole backlog, we had a whole backlog of policies that needed to go through and she would like another year to go through them. Yes, trustee Valen?
And I'll just explain, in the committee, we don't necessarily go through and review each policy, it's more setting the priorities of the backlog or things that have come up to put before the board. It's more setting a timeline, so the board is looking at something on a monthly basis to keep that rolling. So I don't, even if this committee meets less frequently in whatever format it is, I would hope that we've set up things to do the monthly board review and board approval process.
So we're going to go through, trustee Alon, do you have a preference with Governance and Policy, like one over the other? No. I have a preference for Governance, not Policy. Trustee, yes. Do you have a preference for one over the other?
Hmm, I don't.
Huh?
I don't.
Don't, okay. Trustee Valen?
I said a lot, sorry, I didn't think more.
Do you have a preference over Governance or Policy?
I believe Governance could be done in leadership.
You have a preference of Policy, is that what we're going to say?
Probably.
Yeah, I know you. So, can it be a Policy Committee? Are you, is the board okay with a Policy Committee? What's going to happen is at the end of this discussion, if we can't agree, I'm going to have to choose folks on the committee, which I don't want to do. So, is the board okay with separating Governance and Policy and allowing Governance to be done in leadership given the fact that trustees rotate into leadership? Anyway, if we were to do that, I'm coming off. And you can have a Policy Committee all you want, trustee Valen will update me. Anyway, solution?
That sounds good.
It does sound good. We'll come back to it, we're spending a lot of time. Governmental relations, zero trustees want to be on there, we are not having that committee this year. Next, we have the Districtwide Safety Plan. Yes?
Let's just note that if issues come up, we can create an ad hoc committee like we did a few years ago for specific issues.
Yes. Does everybody understand that? Yes, okay. Next, we have Districtwide Safety Plan is a required committee, we have three trustees, we're moving on. Next, we have Safety Committee. We have three trustees interested, not a required committee. Do you want to keep that?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Okay. Notice they're keeping every single committee, so. Next, we have Technology Committee. There's three trustees, not a required committee, do we want to keep that?
Yes.
So, no one's going to have an issue with the amount of meetings this year.
That's necessarily the same thing. Things could be true.
Things could be true, right, okay. Then we have Audit Committee. Three people have volunteered, that is a required committee. So we're going to have to revisit Governance and Policy. You guys can be audited about it. Next, we have Liaison Selections. Yes, we get everybody, wonderful. ECP Liaison this year is trustee Vance. Wonderful. Leah Jackson Liaison this year is trustee Warner. Hydou Liaison for this year is trustee Alon. RJ Bailey Liaisons for this year are trustee, no, I'm Vance again. Jacobson, Jacobson and trustee Mayor. And Willands Middle High School Liaisons are trustee Sepulayo and trustee Valen. Everything worked out nicely, wonderful. We have no NISBA Liaison. Who wants to liaise for NISBA?
Julie.
You will? Julie, okay. Did you put up one in here?
I did.
Okay. WISBA Liaison is trustee Valen, who also serves on the board of WISBA. Southern Westchester Voces, we have David Warner. And PTA Council, we have three folks interested. We normally have two liaisons. So, the, two of the three liaisons have been here before. Somebody should drop off. No one was merged, okay, this is another one that I don't have any determination on, which sucks. Yes, trustee Jacobson?
I will say that if it was just the way it played out this year, that trustee Warner went to some meetings, I went to some meetings, rarely were we at the same meeting. And so, to your earlier point of the number of meetings, we were able to stagger and have representation there without us both being. So, is it the worst thing in the world, if there are three, if we're rotating? Or deliberately rotating?
You know, we never had three. I don't know what the rationale was for it before with two, sure. Does anyone object to having three liaisons? Here you go, we'll move on. Yes?
It's not just saying trustee Davidson makes a good point, having the flexibility for other people to vote if some can, but at least somebody will be there. So it's all kinds of...
All right, we will return back to Governance and Policy later, after we all say. Okay, next item, next item on the agenda. Okay, next item on, next item on the agenda is what's?
Can we hear reports? I have committees since the.
Oh, you did. What? Oh, um, are there any committees?
Sister cousin and Assemblywoman Mary Jane Chiftkey attended. Uh, Dr. Iverson, Dr. Giaroso, Lisa Raymond, Karen Walsh, and Jackie Burton presented on our achievements relative to our five-year strategic plan, mainly student success, a safe, healthy climate, communications, and maintaining a premier workforce. Athletic Director Mike McCoy recognized students for their athletic achievements. There was a wide variety of delicious desserts. The next meeting is to be determined. The Facilities Committee, should I go on?
Yes.
Okay. The last meeting of the Facilities Committee was held on Wednesday, June 18th at 6:30 p.m. in the Woodlands Innovation Lab at 6:30 p.m. We heard a proposal from John Rappaport on using charitable donations to reopen the mansion. I've sent you his proposal and we're having legal look at it to determine its feasibility. We reviewed the proposed concrete wall around the battery energy storage system. Cost estimate ranges from 215K to 237K, which is more than 10 times what we originally thought. The Hightown Fire Chief indicated that the wall is irrelevant to fighting provincial best fire. The, the, uh, community does not recommend the wall. We would like to install bollards and concrete traffic barriers to prevent anyone from parking next to the battery energy storage system. Uh, we relayed the board's decision on the water main project, uh, in blue lines, closing the roof and adding a hydrant, uh, for the mansion. We heard the status of ongoing construction reports. The Hy-Vee window walls are done, we're ordering blinds, the RJ Bailey flat roof is done as well. The Woodlands Security Vestibule, the Woodlands roofs, most of the water main project, the tennis courts, the eight lane, uh, track and football soccer field should be done this summer. Let's see. The Science Lab gas service eyewash station bits came in too high, so we're folding that into the, the main Science Lab renovation project to be completed in phases in the next two summers. The remaining Hy-Vee and LF Jackson roofs are a project for next year. No change on the date. Uh, there will be a facilities tour in preparation for school opening on Tuesday, August 26th at 9:00 a.m. We'll be meeting at the Security Vestibule in front of Woodlands. The next meeting of the Facilities Committee is September 11th at 6:30 p.m. in the Woodlands Innovation Lab. You want me to do the PTA Council?
Sure.
PTA Council held its last meeting for the year on 6/25/25 via Zoom. Day one adopted the minutes of, of the last meeting, which lists the officers for next year. Martina Omealy, President. Gabriela Barahona, Vice President. Linda Lee, Treasurer. Jessica Muldoon, Reporting Secretary. Nicole Donald, Corresponding Secretary. Two, had informed voters to update bylaws to allow election of officers in April instead of June, and increase dues from the units to the council from $250 to $300. Three, voted to submit an application to the district to name a band room, probably this one, after Wayne Lewis. That's it.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Yes, Trustee Valen?
I'm just going to take a moment to suggest, since we're starting the new school year, um, in, beginning in September, October, there are a few of these committees which do allow public participation. I would suggest, um, that any member of the public who wanted to participate in any of these district committees, and I'll specify right now, CEC, Facilities, Finance, and Wellness, and Audit, um, have official public participation which gets approved by the Board. If anyone is interested in participating in those committees, please email board@greenbergcsd.org. We'll repeat this message in September and hopefully have that on an agenda for September, October to make all of that official. I will also take this opportunity to remind those of us, mostly me, who has not been very good at writing up the minutes and getting them approved and posted to Board Docs for public, uh, accessibility. We've got two months now in the summer to get our homework done, um, and then get those approved at the next committee meeting and posted for the public. So just friendly reminder mostly to myself, I acknowledge I'm probably the scoffler, uh, but I might not be the only one, so.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Valen. Next on our agenda is our Superintendent Board. Dr. Chisholm?
Thank you. Uh, well, first, I want to say congratulations to our class of 2025. Graduation is always a wonderful time, not just for the students and the faculty and staff, but also for the families. So I just wanted to say congratulations. Uh, congratulations, Trustees Mayor's, on your reelection as Board President, and Trustee Valen on your reelection as Board Vice President. And welcome Eli and Vanessa, um, to the Board. We're looking forward to your student voice and advocacy on behalf of your peers and the students in the district, so welcome and congratulations for your work. Um, some community events, so last weekend I had the opportunity to participate, um, visit the Juneteenth over at the dam. Had an opportunity to speak with a lot of community members. Everyone there was very welcoming. A lot of people decided they wanted to share some very sage advice, so I listened to it all. But besides the heat, it was a very, a good time. I also plan on being visible at the cultural heritage festivals, as well as visiting some places of worship in the community. So that's going to be a part of my, um, my entry plan and remain out in the community. Um, speaking of community events and community engagement, um, my plan for July and August is pretty much set. I do want to share the locations and the dates with the community, as well as the Board. I'll be hosting a series of chat and shoes, which will be lunchtime events, um, walk-in talks in the mornings or afternoons at some of the local parks in the area, as well as Superintendent fireside chats, which will take place in the evening. So I'm really trying to accommodate, um, families, vacation times, work schedules, all of those things throughout various aspects of the Greenberg Central Community. So with that said, um, so Friday, July 11th, um, the first event will take place at the Greenberg Public Library. July 16th, which is a Wednesday, is a walk-in talk at Preston Park. July 18th is a chat and shoe, the Hy-Vee School Cafeteria. July 24th, the Thursday, 6:30 is a fireside chat, um, at the Fairview Greenberg Community Center to UYSCE. Um, July 21st at 6:30 will be a Superintendent fireside chat in the middle school, high school auditorium. Going into August first will be a chat and shoe, um, time to be determined at High Point in that community. Um, the time and date is also to be determined for Stone Oaks community, so those are two that are pending. For Friday, August 8th is a walk-in talk at Travis Park. And August 13th at 7:30 in the morning for us early risers, not really me, but I'm willing to be there, uh, will be at Secor Woods Park, those are all, Secor?
Hmm.
Okay. Those are all confirmed. Um, once I have the dates and times for Hy-Vee, or excuse me, High Point and Stone Oaks, I will communicate that. But, um, please look for a flyer on the district website by the end of this week with the meeting locations and all their specific particulars there. Um, just to update where we are, it's the end of the year, you know, there's a lot of retirements, resignations, but I want to, um, rest assured with the community instructional staff, we are, we are 96% staffed. And for non-instructional, we are 93% staffed. And so this is the busy season, not just for us, but for all districts, and, um, hiring, all of those good things. So I just want everyone to know that this is, you know, this will be some of the work, the heavy lifting that we'll be doing throughout the summer. And then finally, just thinking about this year's theme and where my vision and direction is going as the new superintendent, um, working with Miguel and with Jackie on this, um, soaring together for a greater Greenberg. So really thinking about our shared vision, our shared purpose, our shared accountability to the students and to this district, um, for ourselves and for every, for others. So, um, that is the direction for 2526. And that is my superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Chisholm. Any questions, comments? No, we're going to move forward. Um, next on our agenda is public comment, but we're actually going to have Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum. If you're, you know, unless anyone has any objection, we're going to move that item. We can move that for us, okay. So number five will be Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Dr. Enjoku.
Thank you. So I was listening to Trustee Vance saying about the first year. I didn't have anything prepared, but I think it would be, you know, it's appropriate that I say that I've had a wonderful first year. I learned tremendous stuff. I really appreciated the community. I appreciated all of you.
You as well. Just being able to, um, have conversation, patience to listen, understanding, thank you. Um, understanding that we're all in this together, I, the warmth that I felt, and the young people. Um, Mr. Cinco, who I was, it was lovely to be introduced, and he actually helped us out with leading the, uh, leading the, um, development of the, um, certificates for our new, new teacher, um, excuse me, our tenure teachers. So all of that, just wanted to say that, um, wonderful year, and I'm looking forward under the leadership of Dr. Chisholm. Um, so there are a couple of things, uh, curriculum and instruction wise. We're busy this summer. So we have some summer programs that we know are in effect and, and going to be starting soon. Some have begun with orientation, but we're excited to launch two title-funded summer programs. We listened to our community, to our students, um, and speaking with Dr. Chisholm, uh, we're, we're going to move forward with the Summer Bridge Program, um, helping rising ninth graders transition, um, looking at from Math 8 to Algebra 1 through focus instruction and enrichment. We're also going to have a Summer Regents Intensive. This is something new this, this summer, so it's going to be taking place this August. Intensive program that's prioritizing our grade 11th and 12th, 11th, rising 11th graders and 12th graders, um, who need extra support for the Regents exam to actually take the August Regents. Um, so I just want to give, um, kudos to our building administrators who really pushed this and advocated for this as well. Uh, we're going to have Summer Curriculum Mapping. Uh, our educators who advocated as well to do this during the summer, working on curriculum mapping using the IB unit template to ensure consistency and rigor, and it's going to happen in two areas, so science and Spanish. So, uh, for science, we're focusing on those Regents, um, level science courses. And then for Spanish, they just, uh, we just purchased some texts for that, so they're making sure that it's in alignment and that the key benchmarks, um, are very, um, similar to check, the new, um, portions of checkpoint A and B. Um, with funded programs, we have, uh, we recently held our annual ESSA. It's done more on time this year, right? So, um, ESSA consultation with valuable input, we had teachers on the call, families, community partners, our PTA representatives were there. Uh, non-public schools were on the call. So thank you to Ms. Johnson for leading this, facilitating this with support from Ms. DeAndrea and Ms. Gillan, which we had time to showcase how the federal funds have supported the academics and enrichment across the district. Uh, regarding personnel, so families have been, begun asking about after-school programming for 2526, um, and we're, we're gearing up now. Um, and so our athletic department, under Mr. McCoy's leadership, actively filling coaching roles for the fall season. So for the fall season, we're currently at 80% of the positions being filled. Um, and recruitment continues. We do need coaches for boys JV soccer, girls JV and modified soccer, varsity and JV volleyball. Uh, we do want to make mention that our flag football, even though it's in the spring season, our flag football continues to grow. Um, we started with, um, and I learned this, that we started with 20 athletes in year one. Last year, um, was year, last year, 2425, yesterday, was, um, we had participation that increased it to about 30 participants. Um, and then what we did in response, uh, we reviewed the program's operations and we actually added an assistant coach, uh, last year, uh, when we saw that there was an increase and looked at some other variables. So looking ahead to year three, we anticipate that there's going to be even greater interest. Um, and we are actively exploring staffing, um, staffing efficiencies, et cetera. So we know that, um, the needs differ for different sports, um, but we're going to remain committed to equity, right? And ensuring that all teams receive the support they need. And, uh, finally, after-school club positions, we're going to be posting some of them, not all. Some of them this summer to support planning. And, um, we're looking at, with Woodlands Middle High School, having that student club day earlier so that we can just get the others moving. So we're just going to do our best to improve every year, um, and see how it works and, you know, work out the kinks. So that concludes.
Um, thank you. Uh, there was a question posed by a community member about Title IX and equity with, um, the flag football, which is a girl's sport, and the football, football, which is a boy's sport, and the number of coaches. Um, I forwarded on an email. Um, so do you want to talk about that, Thor?
Well, I think within, um, the, the sharing, within the, um, the flag football comment that I made before, um, we, Title IX doesn't, it doesn't apply to this, but I, I, that's why I wanted to make sure that I stated around equity and ensuring that, um, every team receives what they need. So staffing and staffing operations, that's determined on a case-by-case, sport-by-sport basis. If we were going to compare football to flag football, which we try not to do, um, football is open to both males and females, so it doesn't really work, you know, it doesn't really work into the Title IX. But, um, just like we did this year, we reviewed flag football, um, with the increase in participation, other variables, and we add, we did add an assistant coach, whereas last year there was just the, um, coach.
Okay, thank you.
But if there are any questions, definitely, I, I recommend we, um, if there's questions from parents, definitely reach out to Mr. McCoy. He's more than willing to answer the question, and if not, reach out to me.
Okay, awesome. Trustee Vance?
Yeah, so there are also clubs, our Richard J. Bailey, are you guys looking to try to start that process early, like you are for the medical?
That's included. Yeah, that was included, so that's why I said some, like most, some. So we're going to do our best, since those that we know for sure, um, are consistent, we, um, run, we, we will do that. Um, but then we do, within our policy, we require to have a student, um, Interest Day at the Woodlands Middle High School, so we need to keep to that as well.
Okay, thank you. Speaking of students, we have two student ex-official members here. You guys heard a whole lot of stuff. Do you have any comments, concerns, questions about, um, superintendents and, you know, meeting, chat and shoes, and fireside chats, and maybe Dr. Enjoku's feedback regarding curriculum and what happens education-wise?
I heard you guys talking about like those committees, like those like, um, four people having like, there's four people in the committee and the other. How will you guys just combine it? So one day you guys would talk about the first committee, and the next day, next meeting, you'd talk about the other committee. So you guys have different voices from different perspectives. So it can be very efficient with the meetings in both committees.
Okay. Yeah, we definitely left a lot of committees combined. Separated them, but yes, we definitely left a lot of committees combined. Um, do you guys have any questions on anything curriculum-wise? Curricular, and extracurricular and co-curricular, which are the clubs, the sports, the academics?
Um, I just have a question on like the approval of the club, because sometimes people don't know how to start a club, or people don't know how, how to get approved. And for my club, I didn't even know it was approved until like the end of the year, like starting of like May. So that was very inefficient, so I feel like in the future, you guys should, um, make sure you tell the advisor, the steward running the club, tell Mr. Smith, so we know what's going on, so we're not all over the place.
Okay. Anybody want to feedback on that process?
Well, that means that we need to, the loop probably isn't being closed properly. So there's usually a proposal provided as per policy, and then it's reviewed, um, and then it's communicated that yes, this can move forward, and then the new club should begin. So we have to figure out where is the, where is, if there is some miscommunication happening in that cycle.
Okay. Okay.
Trustee? Um, as the liaison for, uh, Trustee Alon's Wellness Committee, they're always looking for students to join that committee, so your student voice is heard about cafeteria, sales, what's being served, et cetera. So if you could help the committee recruit people, students that would like to join, uh, we had one, right?
Yep.
Just one last year. She was very helpful, but if you could get the word out possibly and have more people join. She couldn't come to every meeting, but the meetings that were during the day here, she was able to attend. So they're looking for more students to join that committee.
The Wellness?
Wellness Committee.
And they do a lot of different things in Wellness, but definitely food is a huge topic of discussion.
Do you remember when you invited me?
They won't know now.
They won't know.
But they, yeah, if you guys are interested, maybe loop in the, um, ex-official members in the email so that they can know when, and then maybe if you could recruit some people to join, they can see the agenda, et cetera, yes?
Uh, just to ask a follow-up around the after-school programming. Um, while it's not extracurricular, you know, United Way was at, um, Hy-Vee the past couple of years, and Jackson did a program. years, and Jackson did a program too, but I think that was a separate team program.
Help begins.
And I'm just curious if we still have those partnerships for the upcoming school year as well.
So from my understanding, we did, we are continuing. I will follow up on that, but I believe that we'll continue at Hyatt View. Not sure about the Elche, though.
Well, and I want to jump in on that, too. That's okay. So I know, actually, I was contacted today about, and I'll share this with you, grant loss, the funding loss for the United Way. So, you know, that's probably, that's a bit of a loss for the summer with Hyatt View School, too. So I'll be working with the principal to see what we can do about those programs to still serve the students. But I know the news is looking to run something on, on that, too. Bring awareness and attention to that.
I did hear from a community member asking about Westchester Prep. I don't know if you want to share anything about that, but we can share.
We did, it was definitely part of the budget, and we have a proposal, and so we have to, today's the first day for Dr. Chisholm. We will be updating, and then we can always follow that, follow up with that information.
Great. Did both of you, student ex officio members, participate in Westchester Prep test prep for, yes, no? Okay. One yes, one no? Okay, for the ACT, I believe?
Yes.
Yeah, and there was also, it should have also been included in the class, tell me the name.
Career and.
Career and.
College and career readiness.
College and career class. Did you have that class?
Yeah.
Okay, so did you guys do some test prep in there? Okay, great. So it's either you get a college and career readiness, or you do just test prep. So it sounds like both of you had that. Did you feel like it was helpful?
Oh, yeah.
Wonderful. Good to hear. That's what we, we'd like to know, some of the things that were helpful. Trustee Valon?
I'm just going to say the program trustee Jacobson is referring to at Jackson was healthy kids. It's a, it's a paid before and after-school childcare. We did, it's either on tonight, or we did approve it recently for next year. So that's, that's.
Okay. Moving on, another version from the agenda, we're going to have.
$5,712. We deposited $5,170,955 and dispersed $6,152,685 to end May with $41,573,982. I was asked to give an update on what the current status is in the business world at Greenberg. This is the busiest time of year for any business office in a school district. So we're trying to get ready to close the year. The cutoff date for bills to come in to be included for '23-'24 before they become two different categories, I'm not going to go into detail of that, is July 15th. Once that is done, then more of the closing of the books will happen. At the same time, we're preparing for the external auditors to come in. They've already asked for a ton of information to send them, and we do that all through a portal so that they can work on it there before they come into us. They will be here the last week of August to do their actual work in the district for five days, or four days, actually, they'll be here because of the holiday. So that will wrap up the external audit so that they can get it done, get it presented to you, so you can get it uploaded by the October deadline. Still working with the internal auditors, those two audits. Amy and I both have been in contact with them, and I want to meet with you, trustee Valon is the Audit Committee Chair, to go over that and then whatever next steps would be for you guys. Then my transition plan would be to, I will be here on Fridays to work with the business office to get all of this done. I am in constant contact with Amy and with Lori and anybody else in the business office or that I previously supervised needs direction on or help with. And I will be here during some nights during the week after work. Amy is always working late because of the audit, so I will be here with her to help her with that. And then once the state aid and ST3 are released, I will begin working on that also. But I will most likely, if I'm not doing it on a Friday, I'll be doing it at night or on a weekend so that you guys do not miss that deadline because it is very strict, and they are cutting state aid off if you don't file on Friday. So we will make sure that that gets done.
There were a few questions to follow up. Trustee Valon? Hand it up. Trustee Valon?
And just, we heard a concern in the last few weeks about a specific, some specific POs that had to be signed ideally today, I think, for purchasing for the, done?
All done.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
We made sure we got them.
Okay. Just for people who don't know, it's not for the summer work.
For construction.
Right.
Summer construction work. Okay, and there were some questions that board members raised, and I think you answered all those for the board members. I don't know if anyone else has any business questions? No?
Is this a contract?
You can ask about contracts, yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, so Ms. Raymond, there's a contract we have with Auctions International.
Yes.
So I was reading the payment terms, and it looks like they're going to be sending us a check anytime we have proceeds. If I recall, though, the district, we're trying to get out of checks and really start focusing on wires. Is there any reason maybe for this particular agreement, for stepping outside of that?
They don't, they may not offer the ECH. We can ask them if they would do that. Most businesses are moving to that. I would just assume that they haven't changed their terms and conditions. But as you remember, we're going to use them for any time you guys discard anything. Auctions International will send a representative out, look at it, take pictures, put it on their website, and sell it for us, so.
Okay. Do we know if there's anything that's going to be out for sale over the summer, throughout the year?
Well, it would be any, I would say it's the big-ticket items. It would be in technology, and it would be in buildings and grounds, if we were getting rid of anything. We're getting rid of any Chromebooks, say, that are broken, or desktop computers, printers. Somebody always will buy those for the parts. Those are the two major things that I would say. Maybe if you're going to get a new vehicle and the old vehicle isn't worth fixing, somebody will come in and buy that truck for parts.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Trustee Valon?
Let me piggyback on that. I just want to verify that when we do disposive things, the board first approves of the item for disposal, making a list, and then it would go to this.
Yes, it does, it cannot go to Auctions International.
So things we've already approved for disposal may be acted upon once we approve this.
It used to be also that we can take textbooks and sell them back to some textbook companies that then use them, refurbish them. But it's getting harder to sell textbooks back to anybody because everybody's doing things, everything online now. But we try.
There is a question on item N16. Ooh, that's a good book. And trustee Alonzo, I don't know if you can show Ms. Raymond N16 on the contract?
Trustee Jacobson and I discussed it, and it's, the difference is because they rounded to $90 instead of $91. It works out to be $90 or $0.92.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No? All right. That's it, you did it. No, Ms. Franklin? All right. Do you have a question, trustee Valon?
No.
Okay.
It's in line with RFP, right?
Yes.
With the original RFP.
Yes.
Whatever the doles are.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to keep going. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comments for today? Okay. And then next is the, I have to open for a public hearing. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we open a public hearing on the District-wide Safety Plan.
Second. Is we're probably moved in second? Any discussion?
Yes.
That's good.
I'll state that the document has been appended to this agenda, found on the board docs, accessible through the website. Within a short time, I don't remember exactly how many days, but we hope to add an item onto the district website for people to comment on. The public hearing will remain open for at least a month, most likely closing at the end of August. I forget the date of our retreat.
21st.
Maybe August 21st. So if there are comments on the document, please send them to board@greenbergcscu.org, and we will incorporate that into our discussion and/or the document.
And it should be on the website.
I haven't looked at it.
I was told that they were, if they haven't gotten it on today, it will be on definitely by tomorrow.
It's supposed to be a pop-up, or is it, how else is it accessible?
I believe, I don't think I asked for it to be a pop-up, but I could, I could ask them.
It's not yet a news item, so.
Yeah.
If we don't see it tomorrow, we can follow up.
Yep, yep. I'll definitely ask for it to be a pop-up for a while.
Thanks for the.
Okay. All right. We have to go back into executive session, guys. There's one item specifically we're supposed to be working on. Can I get a motion?
I move that we return to executive session to discuss the employment history of particular persons' personal matters and/or recorded records and matters deemed confidential by state or federal law, including seeking advice from the council.
Second. Is we're probably moved in second? Any discussion? My only discussion is we're going to just have the board and the superintendent with All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now, executive session is 9:30 PM. We are. Thank you, Dr. Chisholm. Got to figure out where we are in our agenda. Okay. 11:42 PM, and we have returned from our executive session. We're going to approve our regular meeting approvals. First, office personnel instructional items. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second. Is we're probably moved in second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Can I get a motion for personnel and instructional items?
I move that we approve the personnel non-instructional items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second. Is we're probably moved in second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Board action items.
I move that we approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second. Is we're probably moved in second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Finance items.
I move that we approve the finance items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second. Is we're probably moved in second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Business items.
I move that we approve the business items presented to the board for approval this evening with the exception of N16 on this table.
Second. Is we're probably moved in second? Any discussion? Hearing none? Hearing none? Okay, the discussion item is, there is a little concern about math in the contract, so we just want to align that properly, right?
Wait, N16?
N16.
I always want to be.
It's like X amount of hours for X amount per hour does it equal the number that's in. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item, pupil personnel services items.
I move that we approve the pupil personnel services items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second. Is we're probably moved in second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Closing items. P1, new business. Anyone? Hearing none. Can we move to a German P2? Can I get a motion?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Is we're probably moved in second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. 10:45 PM. Get down.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.